At this time, I'd like to invite Commissioner Jacobson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public of which it calls.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Commissioner Jacobson, here. Commissioner Burkhart, here. Commissioner Ostrom, here. Commissioner Troutman, here. Chair Kennedy, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have before you the agenda for this evening. I'm one of the entertaining-
I'll move that we approve the agenda.
Motion for approval, second? A second, motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Agenda passes unanimously. You also have before you Commissioners the minutes of the November 4th regular meeting.
To approve?
Second.
I have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor? Aye. That passes unanimously as well, thank you. Madam Secretary, announcement, please.
Welcome to the regular meeting of the Santa Clarita Planning Commission. I would like to offer some information to help you understand how we conduct our meetings and how you can best participate. Agendas are on the back table listing the items the Commission will consider tonight along with speaker cards. If you wish to speak on an item that is before the Commission this evening, you must first fill out a speaker card. Please place your completed card in the tray or delivered to me prior to the item being discussed. This will help the Commission process public comments in an orderly manner. If you wish to submit written comments only, complete a green written comment card also located on the back table. When Chair Kennedy announces your name, please approach the podium to address the Commission. Applicants have up to a total of 25 minutes to make their presentation to the Commission. Each individual speaker will be given three minutes to make his or her comments indicated by a colored light on the Commission dais. A green light appears when the speaker begins, a yellow light appears when 30 seconds remain, and a red light appears when the three minutes have expired. Your comments should be completed at this time. As a courtesy, please silence all electronic devices, and to help keep our meeting running smoothly, please refrain from applause. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. First item on the agenda will be a continued public hearing of an item that we continued from the September 16th regular meeting. It's Master Case Number 08-135, Appeal of Notice to Remove a Nonconforming Sign. Take the staff report now from Mr. Darren Siegmiller.
Good evening, Chair Kennedy and members of the Planning Commission. The item before you this evening is Master Case 08-135, an appeal of a city notice requiring the removal of a nonconforming sign on property located at 24879 Railroad Avenue or Triple S Square. Just a brief overview again. The city adopted its sign code in 1990, and it was intended to improve the aesthetic appearance of the community. And at that time, many of the signs that were currently in the city of Santa Clarita became nonconforming signs. The sign code established a nine-year amortization period which ended in November of 1999, and it also set forth the process to abate those signs that were nonconforming. Here's an aerial photograph, again, of the subject property. You can see that it's adjacent to Railroad Avenue here, between 14th and 15th Street, directly adjacent to the LA County Fire Department, Fire Station. Here's a photograph of the existing nonconforming sign. You can see it's a pylon sign, it's approximately 30 feet tall, and has a sign area of approximately 72 square feet. As far as this particular case is concerned, after being noticed by the Director of Community Development on April 21st, 2006, the property owner responded with a letter asking the city to reconsider its request to remove the noncompliant signage due to their contention that there was no location on the property where the sign could be placed. Because the property owner did not remove the sign, the city sent another notice under the signature of the city attorney on July 11th, 2008. And in response to this notice, the property owner appealed the city's determination that the pylon sign was noncompliant in a letter dated July 27th, 2008. Going back to the previous Planning Commission hearing on this item, a public hearing was held on September 16th, 2008. At the meeting, the Commission received staff's presentation and granted the appellant an additional 60 days to work with staff to create a signage solution that conforms to the city's sign code. Specifically, the Planning Commission requested that the appellant provide conceptual drawings of signage that conforms to the city's sign code and a timeline for the removal of the noncompliant sign. The item was continued to this evening, and on the day after that Planning Commission hearing on the 16th, staff mailed a letter to the property owner informing them that they had actually been granted an additional 60 days to work with staff. And the letter provided the date and time of tonight's hearing and described specifically what was requested by the Planning Commission in preparation for the meeting. Letter requested that the appellant provide conceptual drawings of a conforming sign in addition to the timeline for the removal of the noncompliant signage by October 24th, 2008. Since that public hearing, staff has worked with Robert Spigno, that's the son of the property owners, to develop potential designs for monument signs on the property. On October 15th, Mr. Spigno submitted drawings of a potential sign. The drawing showed a 12-foot tall sign on a 1 and 1/2-foot base. The total height of that structure was approximately 13 and 1/2 feet tall. Staff reviewed the plans and provided comments back to the appellant suggesting that the height of the sign be reduced to conform to the city's sign code. Specifically, staff suggested that the sign be reduced to a maximum height of eight feet on a two-foot base. Regardless of the location of the proposed monument sign, the sign would need to comply with the dimensions previously described. So in response to staff's comments regarding the October 15th submittal, the property owner has provided staff with drawings for three potential monument sign elevations in three different locations. I realize these are probably a little bit difficult to see, but they have been included in the staff report. You can see in sign elevation 1 is similar to the original submittal provided by the applicant in that it shows a 12-foot tall monument sign on top of a two-foot base. Again, this sign is too tall per the sign code, and staff recommends that this sign not be approved. Elevation 2 shows an eight-foot tall sign on top of a two-foot base. The unique thing about this sign is it was designed to allow for its placement in a parking stall. You can see that the base of the sign acts as a wheel stop for vehicles that may be parking here so that the vehicle doesn't, in fact, damage the sign. Sign elevation 3 is similar in height to the elevation 2, however, its intended location is not to be used as a wheel stop, but rather something that would require the removal of a parking stall and would have a base and landscaping perhaps on both sides of Here's a diagram, again, provided by the applicant, that shows the potential relocation areas for a monument sign. Again, sign relocation area A, shown on the left, you can see on the diagram you have the largest building on the project site, and this building right here is the liquor store. In front of the liquor store, there are two parking stalls. This relocation area shows the monument sign being placed in the furthest corner of the property so the car could still park in this area and basically pull right up to the monument sign. Sign relocation area B is, again, this is property that's located adjacent to a fire station, and the idea here was to, again, allow for parking to continue, two parking spaces to continue in front of the liquor store, and request a lot line adjustment to allow for the sign to be placed on property that is currently owned by LA County and is part of the Fire Department's property. With regard to this location, staff met with representatives from the Fire Department and Supervisor Antonovich's office to discuss the process that would be required to place a sign on the property that belongs to Los Angeles County. Representatives from Los Angeles County suggested that the property owner contact Los Angeles County Fire Chief P. Michael Freeman regarding the proposal. The contact information for the Los Angeles County Fire Chief was provided to Mr. Spigno on October 16th, 2008 via email. Staff does not recommend this location option due primarily to its potential difficulty in obtaining the required lot line adjustment from Los Angeles County. In addition, it's likely that the Fire Department would have concerns with a monument sign in this location blocking the view of emergency vehicles exiting onto Railroad Avenue. Bottom portion of this diagram on the right-hand side shows relocation area C. This is similar to area A, however, this would require the loss of the parking stall closest to Railroad Avenue. The monument sign would be placed somewhere in this general vicinity, and it's it's staff's opinion that the loss of a parking stall will not affect the ability of patrons to park vehicles close to the retail tenants at Triple S Square. Given the availability of street parking on Railroad Avenue and in addition to the required parking provided on the project site, this option provides for adequate visibility from vehicles traveling in both directions on Railroad Avenue, and also there's a landscape, provided that there's a landscape planner or curbing around the area, the sign in this location would be less likely to be damaged by vehicles entering and exiting Triple S Square. When compared with sign relocation area A, staff recommends the applicant construct, as such, staff recommends the applicant construct a monument sign in the area described as sign relocation area C. So again, we have three locations, and the preferred location by staff is area C, even though it does require the loss of one parking stall. As of the date of this hearing, the appellant has provided staff with signage options that do comply with the city's sign code, however, they have not provided the timeline for the removal of the existing nonconforming sign. Given that the subject nonconforming sign has not been removed and is still located on the property, and given that the nonconforming sign, that the pylon sign does not meet the requirements in the sign code, staff recommends that the Planning Commission determine by minute action that the sign elevation 3 is acceptable in the area shown as sign relocation C, and direct the Community Development Director to approve plans consistent with these options, and continue the hearing to Tuesday, January 20th, 2009, allowing the applicant an additional 60 days to remove the nonconforming sign. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions, and I believe the applicant, the property owner, is here if you have any questions as well.
Thank you for your presentation. Commissioners, questions for staff? Okay, then I'll open up the public hearing. Do we have any comment cards? No cards have been filled out. Here, just go ahead and go up to the mic and identify yourself and location. You can complete the card afterwards for minutes purposes, but for the benefit of everybody that's here now, perhaps some came in late, if you want to make a comment tonight, please fill out a comment card. You can either speak or submit a written comment, it doesn't matter, but if you want to submit something for the record, please fill out a card. They're available on the back table.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak about this matter. I would like to-
I'm sorry, sir. Please, first would you identify yourself?
Oh, yes, Robert Spigno. I am the son of the owners of M&amp;S, or Triple S Square. I would like to go back to the drawings that were submitted, that were displayed here. And I also would like to be able to point some things out directly. I don't know if I need to do something with the-
Please stay at the microphone for purposes of recording this, or take the walk-around. Okay? Thank you.
If we could get to the layout-
Would it help if you could hold the microphone up, please, sir?
Okay.
Thank you.
What I'd like to point out here is, let me see if I can get to the, okay. Relocation C represents, I believe, the only option that the property leans to as far as putting a new sign or new location for this sign. The problem is it does eliminate a parking space. Now, it's a very small frontage, and there truly isn't any parking for retail sales as is. If we eliminate a parking space, in reality, it eliminates 50% of available parking for retail substantial to this property. So I would like you guys, as we're looking at this, to consider this. The other option available to us was, is the property adjustment line, and that doesn't appear to be an option. I do not believe that the Fire Department will go with this easement adjustment. It's just not going to happen. But even if we went with Plan A, which puts the sign in the far corner, they, there was some conversation here where they felt that that location would be a problem for their site as they move out of the Fire Department and look for their clearance on the main road. So they, even if we were to take that option, I don't think it would be available to us, or it would come down eventually because of that concern. Finally, if we use this location, I'm certain that the Fire Department wouldn't be concerned, but again, we go back to the loss of retail sales for this liquor store, and it's very important to them that they have at least two parking areas. We have some, I have pictures here that will show you what it's like during normal business hours with parking availability in this location. As far as the street's concerned, there's always cars parked in front, there is no space, there's no available space, and a lot of times, it is just people that are doing business within the square on the commercial-type stores. So it's not retail. It turns out to be just the normal employees trying to find parking for that business. So we have the street taken, and we have parking taken within the loud space. As soon as we eliminate one more spot, I just want to make the point that we eliminate 50% of available parking. The other side is that when delivery trucks come for the liquor store or for a business located here in the larger building, which is also retail, these trucks come in, by the way, the easement here, the curb, the cutout, is about from here to here on this property. It's about 30 feet, well, it's greater than that, it must be closer to 40 feet. This location is really not practical, even if you were to swing off of the road and enter this property, you would more than likely be at a reasonable speed, you'd have to concern ourselves with this monument or this sign being a problem. And I personally think it's a problem. I wouldn't want to deal with the liability that it may cause. I don't find that as being a reasonable option. As far as the commercial trucks to come to load and unload, well, they can't load as it is. They have two parking spaces, they come in, they unload. If they come through the easement, there is no parking available for them, they typically park here. What they do is they pull in, and these large trucks hit this building, and have done it several times. So it's kind of, is an ongoing problem. So what the owners have done, said, "Everybody who comes must park in this area," first tying up the driveway and the easement to the businesses back here, but also preventing damage to the building. So they only have these spaces for that purpose. You eliminate one, in reality, with a large truck, I don't even know how they'd be able to pull in in that tight location and unload. That's-
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I have a speaker card for Ms. Marie Spigno, owner of the property.
Hi, I'm Marie Spigno. I'm the owner of the property, and I would like to show you some pictures of my parking lot. Can I-
Pardon me, give them the secreters, circulate them.
What I'm trying to say is, my parking lot is always full, and I spoke to Mr. Siegmiller about that, and I told him I would show him some pictures. And I have asked Mr. Siegmiller to have all of you come meet me at the property so that you can see what I'm really talking about. You're looking at the plans, I understand that you can tell what's what from that, but there's nothing like physical, you know, have somebody there physically to see exactly the problems we're going through. We pulled a permit in 1985, and I think I already told you that it was a special permit. It wasn't just, "Go ahead, put up the sign." They had to give us a special permit because they knew they would be putting in a sidewalk, there was no sidewalk at the time, and they didn't want it over the sidewalk. They did it for me, and only because my property, as Mr. Siegmiller said, I asked him several times to show me other properties that were exactly like mine, and he was not able to show me any properties. He says that I have a very unique property, you know, and taking down that sign is going to mean a lot to me. I'm going to lose, I already have two more tenants right now that are supposed to sign up a lease, so, and I have letters here, I'm sorry, from some of my tenants, including the liquor store, to tell you, my sign's been off because my timer went off on me, and I haven't fixed the timer because I don't know where we're at with this sign. And so it's been pretty dark at night, you haven't been able to see the sign, and they're very unhappy about that. I don't know how, what else to say, I'm just trying to ask you to please, please consider this, realize what you're doing to my business. We are a small business, the economy is real bad right now, and if we take down that sign, those people are going to really lose business. That's all, I don't know what else to say. And another thing, if I take down my sign, why are you charging me for a permit? You're the one that wants the sign down. If we have to take the sign down, why are you charging me for a permit? Doesn't make sense, you know, so, please, let me keep my sign. That's all I'm asking. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your input. I have no more cards on this issue unless you just got one. You just got one, okay. Mrs. Nevar Alrabadi, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Hi, how are you?
You're welcome, very well, thank you.
Okay, on the same subject, I'd just like to say we're the owners of the liquor store, and there's only two parking spaces in front of the store, which would, if you guys were to put the sign there, it would, you know, take business away from the store greatly, including the fact that the delivery trucks, how they come into the plaza to park, that would make, I think, a big problem, not allowing them to come in, and the fire station being next door, we can't use any of their space there either, so we're extremely limited to where we need the sign just to remain where it is. And the sign being the way it is also brings, I think, a lot of business to the shopping plaza, and without it, I don't think that the cars, traffic going by on Railroad Avenue would be able to notice our business there. It brings a lot of business to the plaza, and without it, I think all of us would greatly lose business from it, which, you know, is not easy, and these times, it's very difficult on all the tenants there. So I would greatly appreciate if you guys were to remain the sign where it is, and just if you guys like maybe to come to the plaza, as Ms. Spigno said, to view it yourself with your own eyes, you would see how limited the space is, and the fact, the delivery trucks, how they pull in, and the traffic on Railroad Avenue, it's really, it's almost dangerous. So if you guys were to leave it the way it is and not to take out any parking spaces from the front, I think it would be safer, and it would be wiser, and ultimately, it would benefit to all of the tenants in the plaza. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your input. There be no further comment cards on this issue from the public, I will allow staff, Mr. Siegmiller, to react to any of the comments he's heard.
I don't think there's much to say, you know, the requirement or the recommendation from staff is to relocate the monument sign in the area C, and, which requires the removal of a parking space. But in order for the businesses to have adequate visibility from the street, that's staff's best recommendation for, first of all, complying with the sign code that we have in removing the noncompliant sign, and also allowing the businesses as much visibility as they can from Railroad Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, discussion or questions?
Well, I guess, I think the sense of my comments on the, at the last meeting was to try to stretch all the parameters and everything, and it seemed like the applicant was most interested in relocation A. But then he came up with a argument tonight that says that it would block the visibility of the Fire Department in doing their function. Now, is this true? Is this kind of, is there a safety issue with that location, or?
The, one, something that was included with your staff report was a visibility triangle, which basically shows where you're prohibited from locating a monument sign. Pretty much anywhere in front of this space is outside of that prohibited area. I don't think it would be the Fire Department's preference to have a sign there, but in my discussions with the Fire Department, they didn't say anything specific to, you know, major problems with it. I mean, I think the reality is, is that a sign in that location would be subject to damage, blocked from visibility when a car is parked in front of the liquor store, and perhaps could provide visibility issues with the Fire Department, so.
Well, if the visibility wasn't an issue, then it'd be a business decision on their part, and they should be allowed to do whatever they want to do. But I, you know, that's, to me, seems the most logical solution if it is, doesn't cause a visibility, you know, an un- a visibility, you know, an, it's dangerous whenever you get out on the road, first of all. But an undue danger, an unnecessarily high risky maneuver for the fire department to get out of their station, then that seems like a real logical solution, number one. Number two, is there, the, the real problem that he, he brought up was the visibility. That's the one that I got blindsided by. And it, is there any way that we can, like, the existing sign, make it smaller, lower it down so that you can still have the visibility? What we're saying, it has to be a monument sign.
A pylon sign is described in the code as a sign that has, like, a narrow base, like a pole, with the signage that is larger on top of that pole. So the, the definition of a pylon sign is, is basically what's out there. And in order to have that type of sign, you need to meet the size requirements of the property, you know, three acres in size and 500 feet. If, now, they could have a different type of monument sign, but a pylon sign, their property's just not big enough to allow for that.
Yeah, are there other types of businesses that can have a pylon sign? The ones that fit within the constraints?
The ones that meet the size requirements.
Yeah, so it's not a visual blight-type sign, it's just that this place doesn't have the size. But I guess it's been deemed that a narrow place, and if you had a, a shed row of these things, it would be blight. Okay, so, yeah. And, and it just seems to me like the whole purpose of the ordinance is to get rid of blight. But it also seems like it's the possibility of having a whole bunch of these in a row and not one by itself. Now, there, right there could be like a grounds of, of a, an exception. But I, this is too big. What he has right now is too big. In any case, I think, my feeling is, is that we need to go with the recommendation of getting that one down and getting a solution where he has some kind of sign. So I think that's the way that the problem should be framed. And, and, and all of us work together and with that sign down and, and get motivated to come up with a solution. But the blight is there, and what we're going to do is remove that blight. Okay.
I, I think I largely agree with, with Dennis's sentiments on this. Arguably, as far as the fire department's view shed, as they're trying to make a turn, there's always a car there anyway. So I, I really don't think it's going to impact their view to any substantial degree whatsoever. My, my view is that we would allow them, allow the business to choose between either site A or site C, understanding that there are, while site A may be preferable in terms of maintaining their parking, it may present some other challenges with regard to damage to the sign and blockage of the sign when cars are parked in front of it. But that's a business decision they can make. It should be allowed to.
Um, well, you know, we, we've got, one end, we've got location B, where you have
the sign that's almost right against the fence. And if you look at the picture, and I've been by the property and looked at it, there may, there may be some obstruction of the sign if you put it too close. On the other hand, if you're putting it right near the drive aisle, that is a fairly narrow area. And if you have trucks pulling in, you may well have damage to the, to the base of that. So maybe doing something, I mean, I think maybe leaving it somewhere within the range of that space would be at the discretion of the owners. I'm still really hesitant to say that they have to do this because they are constrained. So I'll, I'll wait to hear what other comments there are. But I, I think maybe allowing some variation between A, A and B might work best.
B is on county property, right?
Correct. Okay, not B, but you know, the other, against the fence.
A and C, okay.
A and C, okay.
I think most importantly, you are saying not to lose those two parking spaces, you know. And, and I know it's only two, but you're right, it's 50% if you, if you take one out. And I have also been to the property, and it is very tight for those large trucks, and you don't want more damage to, to the side of the building. So, you know, if, if the applicant's willing to take on, you know, the consequences of putting the sign in relocation A, then I think, again, I agree, it's, it should be their decision.
I think it's, it's, it's our job to say what to, not how to. And I think the, 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 the,[1094.23]
So if we just stripe the parking in front of this property as delivery only or as 15-minute parking, that creates a preferential situation for that property owner and does have an effect on adjacent property owners. So because it's in the public right-of-way, we're not able to provide any sort of preferential situation for one property owner.
Is that only allowed in charter cities, then? Because I know I've seen it in other places.
The caveat to that is that if we look at the area as a whole and say we were, instead of looking at just this property, but rather the parking situation for the whole area between, you know, 14th and 16th Street, or, and looking at not just Railroad Avenue, but the streets that come off of Railroad, then if there was a parking situation, we would be able to address it in the public right-of-way. But specific to one property owner, the recommendation or the comment from our traffic engineer was that we were not able to do that.
And just to add on to that, that's a major arterial roadway, so to start doing that would probably be problematic. Maybe you might see that maybe on Main Street or those types of things in the future or in other cities, but on major arterial roadways, traffic flow is important. They don't want anything to block that.
Anybody heard anything to change your mind?
No.
Okay. Then the consensus is that we'll have minute action to indicate that we'll go with either Monument Two or Three in site A or C.
Or somewhere in between.
Pardon?
Or it could be in between. Correct?
Between A.
Well, somewhere in between at the discretion of the.
Yeah. Yes, exactly. But the community development director's discretion to approve.
Yeah. And so if we could get a motion directing staff to do that and to continue this item to January 20th, and then at the January 20th time, if we have, that would allow the additional time between now and January 20th to both remove the nonconforming sign and install the new sign. The January 20th meeting, you could then look at whether any further action was needed or whether this matter was resolved.
So moved.
Second. We have such a motion in a second. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Commissioner Burkhart?
Yes.
Commissioner Ostrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Troutman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jacobson?
Yes.
Chair Kennedy?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, all. Let's move on to agenda item number two, which is master case 06276, hillside review permit 06013, oak tree permit 06047, and ridgeline alteration permit 07002. Mr. Sigmillar, you have the pleasure of remaining. Give us this presentation as well.
Good evening again, Chair Kennedy and members of the planning commission. The item before you this evening is master case 06276, a request for hillside development review permit 0613, ridgeline alteration permit 0702, and to allow for the corrective grading and accessory structures on property with an average cross slope of 42% within the ridgeline preservation overlay. In addition, the applicant is also requesting the retroactive approval of oak tree permit 0647 as a result of unpermitted grading within the protected zone of an oak tree. Here's a vicinity map. The project is in the RE or residential estate zone. It's in the Sand Canyon area. You can see here is, excuse me, the project site in red. Here is Sand Canyon Road where it meets Placerita Canyon Road. The project is about 240 feet east of the terminus of Warm Springs, Warm Springs Drive. And the property owner, the owner of this property has a residence that takes access off of Josell Drive here. Little bit of background on this project. In July of 2002, the city received a complaint regarding illegal grading taking place on the project site. Following the complaint, the city issued a stop-work order for the grading and informed the owner that project, that the, such activities require a grading permit. Over the course of the next five years, the city received three additional complaints from neighboring residents regarding the illegal grading on the property. The city continued to issue stop-work orders in response to the complaints and informed the property owner that due to the topography of the site, its proximity to a city-designated significant ridgeline, and the presence of oak trees on the property, that additional permits and entitlements from the planning division were required prior to the issuance of a grading permit. In, the city filed a lawsuit against the property owner in February of 2006 regarding the illegal grading. And on August 13th, 2007, the courts granted a permanent injunction and declaratory relief in favor of the city and required Mr. Dominguez to obtain a hillside review permit, ridgeline alteration permit, oak tree permit, and grading permit. Here's an aerial photograph of the project site. You can see the project site is this rectangular parcel here. Again, Mr. Dominguez, the property owner, also has his personal residence here that takes access off of Josell Drive. This aerial photograph was taken in 2000, in the year 2000. You'll see that as we go to the aerial photograph that was taken in the year 2004, you'll notice that there's been substantial grading in this area. So again, here's the 2000 aerial and here's the 2004 aerial. So again, the Dominguez residence and this area is the illegally graded area. And here's an aerial from 2006. It's largely, largely the same, just higher resolution photograph. As I mentioned, the applicant performed approximately 11,000 cubic yards of unpermitted grading on the project site, which exposed adverse bedding planes in the onsite bedrock and thus created an unsafe, unstable condition. In order to stabilize the slope, the engineer of record recommends a buttress, the geotechnical engineer of record recommends a buttress fill be graded to mitigate the adverse condition. Once the corrective grading has been completed, the slope will be stabilized. Corrective grading will require approximately 14,000 cubic yards of cut and fill material which will be balanced on-site. In addition to the grading required for the slope stabilization, the applicant is also proposing walkways and a small pad area for the construction of a gazebo. Again, this is a, not quite an aerial, it's taken at an angle. You can see, here is the Dominguez residence. This ridgeline up here is the city-designated significant ridgeline. You can see that this is the slope that was previously graded without permits. And as we mentioned, the grading on this area of the, of the property has created an unsafe condition where this slope will be, is currently prone to landslides. And because of the project description, here are the list of the entitlements that the applicant is required to obtain. The applicant is required to obtain a hillside development review to allow for corrective grading and the accessory structures on a parcel with an average cross slope greater than 10%. Obviously, the average cross slope on this property is 42%. The applicant's required to obtain a ridgeline, ridgeline alteration permit to allow for the corrective grading and a gazebo within 1,000 feet of a significant ridgeline and in the upper two-thirds of the slope adjacent to that ridgeline. It should be noted that this, because of the ridgeline alteration permit, this project does require the approval of the city council. Finally, the applicant is required to obtain a retroactive oak tree permit due to unpermitted grading that occurred within the protected zone of four oak trees. It should be noted that no oak trees were, were removed and none are proposed with this, with this request. So as far as the hillside review permit is concerned, we've mentioned that the average cross, cross slope of the property is 42%. And the, the property owner performed approximately 11,000 cubic yards of grading. To stabilize the, the slope, the geotechnical engineer is recommending approximately 14,000 cubic yards of, of corrective grading, which would create a buttress at the, to mitigate the landslide. The natural topog, topographic features and appearances are being conserved by means of landform grading to blend the manufactured slope and drainage benches into the natural topography. In addition, the applicant is proposing the creation of a small pad toward the top of the previously disturbed area to accommodate a gazebo. So you can see here on the right is a copy of the, of the grading plan. You can see that the contours are being designed to mimic the natural topography. Up here, you can see at the top of the, the slope, that the applicant is proposing a small pad area. This area is currently relatively flat. The, the slope comes up, kind of flattens out, and then goes back up to the significant ridgeline. But this is, is something that the applicant has proposed as a, a small pad to allow for a gazebo structure. As far as the ridgeline alteration permit is concerned, in an effort to achieve the city's objective of preserving unique visual characteristics and resources of significant ridgelines within the city, the ridgeline preservation ordinance was established. Any development, including but not limited to grading permits, building permits, and land use entitlements located within 1,000 feet of the ridgeline and within the upper two-thirds of the overall height of the ridgeline, is subject to a ridgeline alteration permit. So on the left side of the screen, you'll see a grading plan with the, the cut and fill areas colored. The red areas are the cut areas, so the dirt would be taken from these red areas and placed lower here on the, on the slope. Just to kind of give you an idea, the significant ridgeline runs adjacent, just south of the property, about 100 feet. You can see the dotted lines here, those represent the significant ridgeline. So there are two criteria that need to be met in order to determine whether or not a project requires a ridgeline alteration permit. Again, the first criteria is, is it, is the project within 1,000 feet of the significant ridgeline. This blue line up here designates the 1,000-foot line from the significant ridgeline. You can see that the grading and the gazebo are within that 1,000 feet. In addition, is the project within the upper two-thirds of the slope? This elevation line, this topo line right here, represents the upper two-thirds. So anything on the bottom side or the southern side of this line, any activities, grading, any permits required in this area would require the applicant to obtain a ridgeline alteration permit. You can see that the much, some of the, well, a small portion of the corrective grading and the pad area for the gazebo and the gazebo structure itself are within that area that does require the applicant to obtain a ridgeline alteration permit. However, this next slide shows a cross-section that shows that although this project does require the approval of a ridgeline alteration permit, the extent of the grading are approximately 600 feet away from and 200 feet lower in elevation than the significant ridgeline. Here's again the grading plan with a cross-section line drawn through the middle of it. So you have the, the bottom here is, is the, the grading plan. The top shows that cross-section. This area right here is the highest point of the, of the grading. This flat area here would be where the gazebo would go. This red dot is the 1,000-foot marker from the significant ridgeline. And this orange dot is the, represents the upper two-thirds of the slope. So again, like I said, the, although it does require a ridgeline alteration permit, the silhouette of the ridgeline will not be touched or disturbed. And, and the grading is, is pretty far away from, from the significant ridgeline. As far as the oak tree permit is concerned, the applicant is required to obtain an oak, a retroactive oak tree permit to allow for grading activities that encroached within the protected zone of four oak trees. The applicant has not removed any oak trees on the site. In addition, the corrective grading does not require further encroachment into the protected zone or removal of any oak trees. The preliminary landscape plan provided by the applicant identifies the installation of 34 coast live oaks as part of the native landscape materials to be planted on the site, to be planted on the slope to protect against slippage and soil erosion and to minimize the visual effects of grading and construction on the hillside area. Project was duly noticed with, in accordance with the noticing requirements for the proposed hillside review permit, ridgeline alteration permit, and oak tree permit on October 28th, 2008. The planning commission public hearing was advertised in the Signal newspaper 21 days prior to, to tonight's date. And through onsite posting, in addition to a sign that was posted on the site 14 days prior to the hearing. In addition, the property owners within 1,000 feet were noticed by mail of the property. In response to the noticing, the staff has received one letter of opposition. The letter references concerns with the illegal grading activities by the property owner and impacts to oak trees. An initial study was completed evaluating the environmental impacts created with the proposed project. Based on the initial study, a mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the proposed project and the environmental documents were posted for public review from October 28th to November 17th, 2008. With that, staff recommends the adoption of resolution P 0828, recommending the city council, recommending the city council adopt a mitigated negative declaration and approve master case 06276, subject to the attached conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation. And I believe the applicant and his representatives are here and staff's available for any questions.
Okay, thank you.
A lot can happen before you get to your bus stop, so let the City of Santa Clarita's Transit Division keep you informed of those urgent changes through U-Text, a text messaging service that sends a text alert to your mobile phone when there are unforeseen changes to your commuter route. Subscribing to U-Text is simple. Send a keyword text message to 41411 and select the commuter route you want and receive text alerts. Keyword options include all of Santa Clarita's commuter routes. Standard text messaging rates apply, so please check with your service provider for applicable charges.